I'd like to begin the regular June 10th, 2021, meeting of the Peters Township Planning Commission. We have a rule called Start.
Mr. Mills will not be here. Ms. Corble?
Here.
Mr. Selepus?
Here.
Mr. Wiley?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Magreeno?
Here.
Mr. Carter Phillips?
Here.
First thing we have is the approval of the minutes from the last regular scheduled meeting on May 13th. Do we have any comments, questions, or concerns? If not, can we have a motion to accept?
So moved?
Second. We have a motion to move and approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Number three, reports and correspondence. One thing we have in our packet is a, is a letter for a Brookwood Road sidewalk. Do we have some feedback on that, Ed?
Well, I'll announce that we did get a letter from Abe. I can't make out his last name.
Weaver.
Weaver?
Yep.
Age five. He wants sidewalks on Brookwood Road. And we just approved those two new developments there, Brookwood Village, Brookwood Place. We are making them put a sidewalk along Brookwood Road, but Abe lives way up by East McMurray, where Brookwood almost intersects with East McMurray. So, you know, it would be nice to have a sidewalk there, but council has this letter as well. So at some point, once I know more information, I will respond to Abe and send him the letter back. But I wanted to make sure that we acknowledged receipt tonight at this meeting.
Yes, we do. Do we have any which in our packets? Thank you, Ed, for that and the follow-up, please. Do we have any site plans or subdivisions filed?
No.
Is there any changes to our agenda?
No.
Do we have any audience comments not relegated to one of our agenda items? If not, we'll move on. Do we have any old business? I don't see any.
None.
Okay. So are you business? The first one is the Planning Commission recommendation for Brookwood Place, Amendment Number Three, final plan on Cousselane.
You should be used to seeing these plans now. Once these units get put in the ground and the foundations start coming out of ground, Donal Land Partners is asking for this amendment, Brookwood Place Amendment Number Three. It's for, they pinpoint the exact location of these party walls and no new lots are being created. It just simply, for this attached three-unit townhouse section in Brookwood Place, they're pinpointing the exact location of the party walls so that the new lot lines can be centered on those common walls and allow fee simple transfer when the unit is purchased. Staff's recommending we approve this amendment, Brookwood Place Amendment Number Three, subject to Washington County Planning Commission review. And they add the name of Cousselane onto the plan with the right-of-way width defined.
So very straightforward. Are there any comments or questions? None from the audience, I don't expect. Can I hear a motion for action on this?
I'll make a motion that the Brookwood Place Amendment Number Three, according to staff's memo dated June 3rd, 2021, be approved, including the two conditions outlined in their memo.
I'll second. If a motion made and seconded, all those approve, say aye.
Aye.
So passes. Second to new business is the Planning Commission recommendation for the Davis-Og re-subdivision on Mount Lane Drive.
Two adjoining landowners on Mount Lane Drive, Mr. Brian Davis and Mr. Gary Og, they own adjoining lots. They're requesting township approval to re-subdivide the common lot line between the two properties. Over the years, I don't think either one realized where property lines were and did some improvements over the line. So this plan just simply reestablishes a common lot line between the two lots. The Og lot gets, decreases in size to 1.07 acres and the Davis property increases in size to .64 acres. This property is in the LD, Low Density Zoning District, which is a half acre minimum. Both lots meet those requirements and this just simply keeps the improvements made on the appropriate lot. It's a simple lot line shift. Staff's recommending approval, subject to those three conditions listed in my memo.
Okay. Do we have any questions or concerns with this? I suppose anybody from the audience does either. If not, can I hear an action motion for this agenda item?
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the Davis-Og re-subdivision plan on Mount Lane Drive, subject to the two provisions set forth in the, in the Planning Commission memo. Three, sorry.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Third item is a Planning Commission recommendation, Arlequino subdivision.
Been a lot of re-subdivide tonight. Thomas A. Robinson, owner of the Arlequino property is, along with the South Hills Bible Chapel, the property owner behind the Arlequino property. This plan, the Arlequino subdivision plan number two, is another simple lot line shift. That, see that little blue corner there, between the green and the blue? That's a portion of the Arlequino's parking lot and enclosed dumpster area that actually sits on the South Hills Bible Chapel property. This re-subdivision removes that encroachment onto the South Hills Bible Chapel property and makes that property part of the Arlequino property. Simple subdivision. Both properties still remain in compliance with our minimum half acre requirement in the general commercial zoning district and the, that property behind is in the, is in the, I think that's the medium density residential district and that's 19.25 acres. So, simple re-subdivision, staff's recommending approval, subject to those three conditions listed in my memo dated June 3rd.
I have a question. When something like this is presented, I have nothing, I don't have any qualms about the current use, but there was an issue with the current use of, like, Arlequino. I'm just making, I'm rhetorical, you know, on the fact that if something was out of whack and we wanted that to improve, can we do that during something like this?
Say it was like, like if it was a non-conforming use?
Yeah, well, like, they needed to improve something on the facade, or they needed to improve the traffic, or they had to have trash thing. Does that come under?
I don't know.
Like if they needed to do like a connection to an adjacent.
Something, you know.
I don't know, just a revision.
With a subdivision. Again, I'm just picking this as a, as a generalized question.
It's a good question. I would say, I'm gonna say generally no, because they're just simply shifting lot lines.
But you know what I mean?
If they came back to us with a revised site plan to do an expansion, that's when you can
Okay.
make them connect or
Do those other.
adjust whatever we, whatever we're having a problem with.
Yeah, okay. Okay, getting back to this recommendation, do we have any questions or concerns from the board?
So, Ed, my question is, it's going from the, where the red line is to where the blue line is.
Correct.
Okay.
Where'd it go?
Just topped out.
No.
Okay.
Yes, but the answer's yes. We talked to both the owner of Arlequino and everyone's on board with this.
Okay. Well, hearing the questions, anything from the audience? We don't need any if there isn't any questions. So, how about a motion?
I'll make a motion that the Planning Commission recommend the subdivision as outlined in the memo from June 3rd, along with the three conditions outlined in the memo.
I'll second. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Last of them is, is a Planning Commission recommendation also for Juniper Woods. It's a revised lot, Lot 58, open space, final plan, Juniper Way.
As a employee and owner of PVE Engineering, who is the survey of record, I'll be rescusing myself in this discussion.
Okay, so noted.
271 Artland LLC, owner and developer of the Juniper Woods Plan of Lots, currently under construction. It's a 60-lot subdivision off of Thompsonville Road in our Conservation Residential Overlay District. Along with Courtney Golemieski, who recently purchased that lot 58, that's the blue lot up there in the plan, they're asking for township approval for the Juniper Woods Revised Lot 58 and Open Space Parcel HR re-subdivision. To accommodate, and I said in my memo to you, to accommodate their house on this lot, that was a mistake. It's, the house that they want to build fits on the lot as it's currently configured. To get the deck that they want and be within our 30% lot coverage, which is our lot coverage requirement in the Conservation Residential Overlay District, they needed a little bit more area. And this plan simply grabs a small little piece of the open space parcel HR directly behind this lot and adds it and combines it with the existing Lot 58. So Lot 58's getting a little bigger. It's, it's getting bigger by 484.5 square feet and the open space area in the back is, is getting smaller by that same square footage. The Juniper Woods subdivision exceeded our minimum requirement of 25% open space, 7.6 acres. With this re-subdivision, when it's all said and done, they'll have 8.5 acres or 27% open space in the Juniper Woods plan. Staff's recommending we approve the revision to Lot 58 and Open Space Parcel HR in the Juniper Woods subdivision, subject to those two conditions listed in my memorandum to you.
Now, are open spaces still designated with township markers?
Um.
They were in the past.
They were. We haven't been doing that lately. We could still do it.
What do you mean by marker?
It's pretty obvious.
Survey space?
No.
More like a post with Peters Township.
Oh, like a four-by-four post with a branded emblem in it. Those are for township open space.
Okay.
This is HOA private open space, so we don't really do it when it's private.
Okay.
But those markers delineate public open space.
So essentially, it's really just a bump out of her lot?
Correct.
To provide, it's like buying a bigger car that fits in a garage and you just have to bump out the garage a little bit
That's right.
to let the car fit.
Yes. And, you know, this is the first, we've issued probably, there's 30 lots, 60 lots in Juniper Woods. We've probably issued
25?
At least 30, I would say. This is the first lot that we've had a lot coverage problem.
Issued 30 what?
Building permits for new homes.
Okay.
And this is the first one that we've run into a lot coverage issue on. Most of the homes are well within our 30%.
It's just because of the size of the house?
Well, the house, as I said, fits. They want to put a deck on the back that then pushes them over that 30%.
So it's irrelevant whether it's a deck or a house. It's, the structure is.
The footprint is, it requires that extra square foot.
It does, to meet our 30% lot coverage.
Right.
Is it a topography issue or something that they want to build a larger, a deck that, I mean?
It's just the footprint of the house and deck.
My concern is if everybody, if, I mean, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight lots that are in that same area, but they all want to come and then say, oh, they got a, they got a
No, because
They built their deck and so, and they went and got this and we're setting, someone's setting a little bit of precedent here. If somebody, if everyone wants to come and build a huge deck on the back of their house, we're squeezing down the, the open space even more.
Well, we, we issue
My issue is that like, there are a number of lots. Are we just gonna all of a sudden have everybody come in here building big decks on the back of their house?
I don't think so. Like I said, most of the homes that we're issuing permits for in this plan are well under our lot coverage and a lot of them do have decks and pools on them. This was one of the smaller lots in the plan, I would say.
I was gonna ask, what's the size of this lot?
You can come up, John.
The size of the lot now is, let's say, .21 acres.
Yeah, it's pretty small.
It's just probably the smallest lot, one of the smallest in the plan. If you look at
Come on up, come on up, John.
Come to the microphone.
The folks on TV can hear you from the microphone.
Hey, John, you gotta give your name and address and tell us.
John Golemieski, 198 Hill Place Road. If you just look at the four lots you see there, that is a lot smaller. This house by no means is the biggest house in that plan and, and it's probably an average house for the size of plan. I built one for my daughter across the street. The lot was a little wider, house was no bigger. It just, when, when we, when we purchased the lot, didn't know about the 30%. And we found a house that fit for the side yard setbacks, the seven and a half feet, not thinking of the 30%. And we were only over by less than 30.1%, but we were over. So we tried to, the deck, if you saw the plans, and I probably should have maybe brought the plans, it's an integral part of the house, where there's a roof over it and it's just not a deck that we want to make larger to, you know, to sit more people on the deck. It's just part, and it supports the roof and so forth. So there's where we were over the 30%, but we worked on the plan for the side yard setbacks and not knowing this. So Woody was kind enough, I talked to Woody Welsh, and, and to let us have a few more feet, seven and a half feet is what we get.
So does it still meet the 30-foot setback off the rear?
Meets all the setbacks.
Side yard and?
Side yard, front yard.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioner comments?
My, my only, only concern with it, aside from the, just if it precedes, and I understand what you're, I get it, is that, that everybody else, do you know what I mean, who then also then want to fit a shed and they want to fit a, you know, something else on the end and then just that this property, you know, their sheds, their, you know, there are things that you would normally, people put at the back end of their yards, do you know what I mean, gets to be, and it's, it's just gonna be really more obvious to the rest of the neighbors and the rest, and is, are you creating something where the neighbors come in and say like, well, I want to put my shed, you know, in line with theirs? And then we've got setback issues there. Is there anything, would there be any objection to some sort of amendment or agreement that the extra space is fine, but that as far as, you know, setback of a shed or a swing set, whatever it is you would have to put in, would be no further back than everybody else on the street? Do you know what I mean, to keep it, keep it in line? Do you see what I'm asking?
I do, but in this case, this, this slope's way down. There's not gonna be
There's not gonna be anything down. I don't, I don't know the topography.
It's, it's, I mean, that That's seven and a half feet
Oh, it's a ravine.
Goes from, from here to the floor. I mean, it goes straight down.
Okay, okay, yeah. And that happens a lot.
It's really not usable.
So it's not usable land either?
They can't even build a shed.
Couldn't build it.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
How much of that is unusable space, Ed, would you say?
What, what?
Of the, of the .21, which is already pretty small. How much is?
You're not, I mean, you're not gonna put anything in that additional.
I knew they weren't gonna put it there. My question was, is if they were, if they were all like flat lots across, do you know what I mean, and then somebody got to jet out a little bit further and so then your setbacks, you could put swing sets further, you could put, you know, sheds and things like that further, I wouldn't want it to be obvious.
Topography.
Is the topography's gonna eliminate that?
Yes.
Okay.
For most lots.
Yeah, especially
Everything slopes down.
It slopes down. So aside from a repelling course, there's nothing else you're gonna be doing there?
No.
I gotcha. Okay. All right, then, that, if that's the case, then I don't have that issue. But going forward, if different people want that, that would be my only concern, is that you give the extra space and then, but you would still, to make things look similar, you would want to maybe add an extra provision that people aren't using that extra seven and a half feet to add more stuff to their yard.
Right. What was I gonna say? Lost my train of thought there, but, oh, the open, we're, you know, they're over by, they're 27%. At some point, you know, we may see one more lot come in here eventually, but, you know, this option's not gonna be available to all those future lands.
They probably have enough cushion on the open space to accommodate several more.
I don't think so.
No?
Because
It's about almost an acre.
What do you, the developer, 271 Artland LLC, wants to create another lot in there, so that open space is gonna get tighter.
Oh, right.
Yes.
Maybe gotta hurry up before somebody else
Right.
More on her backyard.
I think he holds a strength for that.
Is the setback for an auxiliary structure or ancillary structure the same as that 30-foot setback?
No, it's 15 for an accessory.
That's what I thought. So that's different.
Unless it's real small, too.
Hmm, okay. Simple re-subdivision here on Lot 58 and Open Space HR in the Juniper Woods plan.
Anything else, ladies and gentlemen? Can I hear an action motion on this?
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the Juniper Woods Revised Lot 58 and Open Space Parcel HR in accordance with the two provisions recommended by the planning staff in their memo dated June 4th, 2021.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Are there any other issues that we need to discuss tonight?
We would like to, because it was a simple, fairly quick meeting, we would like to, we had a workshop with council on May 27th and we talked about changes, was it May 27th?
17.
May 17th, I'm sorry. We talked about some projects that have occurred in the Town Center Zoning District and the MR mixed residential and the Conservation CR overlay districts. We would like to run through what we heard and what we think both Planning Commission and council agreed on in terms of the changes, so that when we bring an ordinance before you, it won't be all new information.
Stick your shot. So digesting what we heard during that workshop, like, yeah, it's, yeah.
Thank you.
You don't have to sit here and listen all day.
Yeah.
Take care, John.
Good night.
You know, we talked a lot about the waters in particular when discussing the Town Center and how, what happened to the waters could potentially impact future developments here in the Town Center Zoning District. So I think it was agreed upon by council and Planning Commission that we wanted to kind of get ahead of any of those future developments and tailor the ordinance requirements to what we think is most appropriate for that district. So that really includes a couple of things, mostly related to building height. After our workshop, we sat down a staff and came up what we think is a creative way of measuring building height, both at the front of the building and opposite, in the opposite side of the building. So in essence, that would be a definition change of how we measure height of the building. It would no longer just be the front, it would be the front of the building and the opposite side of the building. So we don't have particularly like a situation such as the waters where, yeah, the front of the building might be in the back, adjacent to the church, because that's where the front entrance is, but it's actually much higher at the opposite side of the building on Valley Brook. And I think that would preclude that type of situation from ever coming up again.
How are you defining front?
We define front of building where the main entrance is located.
So would that have addressed our concern on the waters?
I believe so. Because when you measure the height of the building and the waters at Valley Brook, it's higher than what it is at the front of the building at the main entrance, which is the side that faces the church. But because the side against Valley Brook is not the front of the building, that was not the measured building height. So in essence, so this would get us measuring both sides to make sure that nothing is above the height required.
Suggest we, because the front of the building is dictated by the development team and where, how they're gonna access the building. So it's not within the control of the township. And township seeking to control how high something is. So I think if we were to maybe look at frontage on particular roadways, that may be another way to define that. I understand where you're going, but first thing I'm thinking is, well, I'll just define the front as the, you know, another element or another side.
Well, I mean, are you gonna move the main entrance to a non-ideal location just to redefine the front of the building?
Get another story that may be required by the profile.
Well, we're gonna limit stories as well.
Okay.
Not to include the underground garage or?
I don't think the, I don't think, coming out of that meeting, we wanted to revise how we consider underground parking to basically make it a disincentive for underground parking. I think we're comfortable with how we measure stories in that sense. We're just gonna bring everything down one step. From two, three stories permitted by right, four-story conditional to two stories permitted by right, three stories permitted by right or conditional. We're still a little bit up in the air on that one.
Above ground.
Correct.
So, question for you. I think the consensus was that four stories is too high, so we're gonna knock it down to three, max. But if someone comes in with a three-story building in the Town Center, should it be a permitted use by right or a conditional use? Right now, in the Town Center, three stories is permitted, four stories is conditional.
And your question is, three stories be conditional or permitted?
Correct.
Correct.
I think that's, I mean, in my opinion, then if you're trying to make an actual change, then you have to go down a floor, because, I mean, conditional use just means if they, I mean, if they meet all the requirements, you have to approve it. So if you have somebody that's good at what they're doing and they're, and it's something like this, where they wanted it built and said they were gonna find ways to do it, you need the conditions for a conditional use. You have no choice but to approve it whether you like it or not.
So should it be permitted or conditional, if you go three stories?
Conditional.
Conditional. Why?
Because we're saying that we don't, because if we leave three stories, if we leave three stories as permitted, then it still leaves the opening for the fourth story.
No.
Or you're just, you're saying never, ever, ever have a fourth story.
Only through a variance process.
Yeah. You would never have four stories.
To drop.
We're saying, we're saying, taking that four-story out entirely. Where max height of a building in the Town Center would drop to three, which is 41 feet, max?
Correct.
I would say conditional with parking garage underneath.
I think it's gonna cause restrictions to develop.
But, just a question. You don't have to answer it now, but we're, we're gonna debate that one.
Let me just think about like, to me, worst-case scenario would be if somebody bought the middle school property and decided to build a four-story building right up next to McMurray Road. Would, is that what we're?
Four stories would be out.
Yeah, be three stories.
Gone.
Okay.
It's three stories max. That's the change that we're gonna make.
Above ground.
Correct. The question we're not crystal clear on is, if we drop it, which we want to do, to three, should there be any conditional use process that they'd have to go through? Or should it be a permitted use? Right now, in the Town Center, if you come in with a three-story building, it's a permitted use.
Four stories conditional.
Four stories conditional.
What's the condition?
Whatever we
Right now? I mean, what, what is it right now?
What?
What is the condition? What's the condition?
It's a conditional use. You can come up with conditions.
Oh, we, oh, it's not written?
We can establish those criteria. It's flexible.
Correct.
Based on the circumstance, the location.
But it does give us an extra level of control.
It does. Conditional use does.
Yes.
But, you don't have to, we'll think about that and bring those two options back when we have the actual ordinance drafted.
Well, can I ask, is there a problem with, with having three-story? I mean, we're taking the fourth story away.
No. In our mind, no.
I mean, all I'm thinking is, do we want every three-story building to come in through here for the Town Center?
Well, I mean, it's gonna have to come through here anyways.
Comes through, it just, that conditional use adds
We have to go through with the conditional use.
Just gives us a little more control. I mean, it gives you the ability to, if there's things that you don't like, if there's things that you
It adds a public here.
If I'm, if I'm gonna build something here, I'm gonna build as much as I possibly can to maximize. So I'm gonna do whatever I need to do to get it to be three stories to, which helps point, like
I mean, just when I, when I used to present for these kind of things, you know, conditional use gave the township, and especially if we're talking about a Town Center like this, where we want it to be pleasant and, and we might think of things going on in the future where we wish we had those.
Condition.
You can ask for more, you can ask for more trees, you can ask for dividers, you can ask for a fence, you can ask to say like, I don't want you to put in six-inch trees. I want you to buy, you know, butt trees. And it allows you to, to negotiate with the developer a lot more
Yeah.
if something's a conditional use. So
It gets us the ability to
It's a pain, but it's great for the township, because it gives so much more control.
We can tailor it how we want.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you don't, and you don't have one of those things where, where you're like, oh, crap, I wish we had thought about this, because we already, I don't know, for me, we, I think we saw it just with the last month, talking about like, it's hard to envision what's gonna go in there.
Yeah.
And making some things a conditional use and just requiring that, there's usually, they're not, I mean, it's not like it's a non-conforming use. It's not like it's something that's a really high standard. It just gives you some control.
It's not a deterrent. I don't think it would be a deterrent to whoever would want to build it.
Except the people who just want to put something up quickly and not really, you know. Just for, I mean, just for me, when I used to do this all the time Just for, I mean, just for me, when I used to do this all the time and have to come before the planning commissions and whatnot, it just made you cross more of your Ts and dot more of your Is.
And the Town Center, maybe we do want that, so we're gonna bring it back to you as a conditional use.
The, the question on height for three stories, four stories, what have you, so, is, was the subject property we talked about is kind of me and the genesis for a lot of this discussion, is, was the consensus at the workshop, I do apologize for not being there, that the height was a problem, or the mass, the size?
It's a combination, it was. And that's, and that's twofold in what we're proposing as changes. We're not only are we changing total stories, our definition of height, and we're bringing everything down in terms of maximum building height, we're also, there, we, in the Town Center, you're allowed one FAR for your development, which, you have 20,000 square-foot property, you get a 20,000 square-foot building, depends on how you do that to make parking and other things work. Waters is at point eight five, we say, okay, maybe that's critical mass for mass, so let's bring that FAR maximum in TC from one to point eight five. So we don't ever get something that's even more massive than the waters.
And we talked about this a lot. The fact that they put their parking underground allowed them to get that point eight five FAR.
Yep.
Because you don't count them apart.
Correct.
Right.
It's, yeah, it's such a boon to your...
And we didn't wanna discourage a Town Center development from doing underground parking. That's a great thing.
If somebody wants to spend the money to do underground parking, by all means, go ahead.
Well, there's a trade-off for that in the pro forma, though. I mean, they're going, you need to increase the square footage. So you are inflating the mass of it.
Right.
I think the challenge we see there is, there's several, there's several things happening at once, it's the way in which that building sits from Valley Brook, how it sits up, and how close it is in the grade there, and, you know, I think, I think that really emphasizes, makes it a little bit more...
Yes. If it was down at street level...
If it was down at street level, it would be a much different feeling.
Yes. So, you know...
You're looking at a steep slope to that.
Is there a reason why we have a maximum front setback of 30? And what, just, I'm...
Just so that, in a Town Center environment, you get, you wanna create that consistent facade frontage, you don't want one building up here and the next building next to it that far behind.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah. I guess I was just thinking of the middle school, and where, you know, that'd be, and if they redid, that'd be so much closer to the road.
It will, it will come closer.
I mean, it'll, it'll bring us so much closer up to...
That's good, I mean, that entire site's just gonna completely change.
Yeah.
If the school district decides to...
Yeah, yeah.
So...
I just meant that people are used to seeing, you know, the school really far setback, and now 30 feet's nothing. 30 feet is a lot more, to me, it's a lot more like being on 19, and at least...
30 feet, 30 feet, setback on 19.
I mean, like, on 19, like, you pull off and the building's right there, and just, this is a residential area, and just for me, the idea of it still having that residential feel and things being pushed back.
You like that better?
I, I personally, because we're, we still are, we're not trying to create another 19. We're trying to create a, a Town Center in residential area.
But what we, what we encounter with that, when we try to establish this Town Center, is we don't want parking lots between the road and the building, so then if you're pushing the building back at a 50-foot setback, then you don't have room behind the building to put parking, so we have to balance those factors.
No, I, I get that it's hard, I just said, that's gonna make, that's just the whole... You know, that's gonna just shove everything, that's gonna have less of a residential feel. When on the other side, the school's all the way back, even those couple of small businesses across the street, those houses are set way back, and if you're looking for, you know, from like a design standpoint, for the houses...
Oh, that's 50 plus feet, but that, that'll someday redevelop.
I, I agree with you, I'm just saying that I don't know that in the end, that'll be a good thing for what's supposed to be a Town Center in a residential area. Now, if the whole frontage still has to say tree, then it kinda looks like this, then that's fine. The other side of the street really looks, the, you know, the, the library's huge, but it doesn't overwhelm the spot. You know, this is a huge building, but it doesn't overwhelm this spot here, 'cause it still has, this looks like this is still a residential neighborhood, and my biggest fear is that what I think is a great thing, which is a Town Center, pops up this big giant, looks like a mall in the middle of, which is why I was, I wanted the two feet, right? Because it looks like we've got a mall in the middle of Peterstownship, and I ultimately don't think that's, to me, I don't think that's, that's good, but that's just my opinion.
But the whole idea is to create a...
Absolutely.
Town center, not a Route 19 corridor.
And that's why the 30-foot kinda just, to me, it's not parallel with what we have on this side of the street. And I, my opinion would be is we should want it to be somewhat parallel to what we have on this side of the street.
And I get what you're saying, but I think all the other design criteria, sidewalks, street trees, you know, we have other different elements as part of TC that would not make it Route 19, it would give it a much different feel than that, even if the buildings were only 30-foot.
Yeah, I mean, I think everything we envisioned was, has buffers in between that road and whatever building is put.
Sidewalk, street tree.
Sidewalks, tree installations, all of that stuff was...
And admittedly, I wasn't on, I know that was the sidewalks and on the planning commission, so I, I don't, I don't have a clearer view of it as you guys do.
And one trade-off we're gonna see is that although we pull those buildings up, it should activate that roadway and that sidewalk center a little bit more, so pedestrian-centric, and really, if you have lower-level retail, you're walking in and out of shops, I mean, it should really activate that corridor.
Hopefully, you'll see traffic speeds slowed down as people are paying attention to what's around them, it's not just everything's all wide open and I can go without worrying about anything.
Which really dovetails into where's the parking gonna go, and I think you're, that's probably the next lot.
Can I ask, what's the setback of this building to...
Us?
Ours.
Who's the property line?
Guessing, I'm saying 30 feet plus.
A little bit more than 30.
But in terms of parking, Rocco, in the Town Center, we're not recommending any changes, that parking seems to be working where we want parking to be, behind the building, under the ground, that's all staying the same.
I was alluding to underground parking, and there was some, maybe I misunderstood that you were kinda, kinda trying to discourage that.
Yeah, there was talk of, if somebody, if somebody wants to do underground parking, we need to reduce their, we need to count that against their FAR.
Oh, no.
Exactly, right.
Right, yeah.
So we had to get them off that tract on, at the workshop.
Yeah, they were heading down that way.
Yeah, we're not making any other changes that we think require us to look at parking any differently than we do today.
So will parking count against the FAR?
No.
No.
Good.
That's everything for Town Center. Looking at mixed residential and conservation residential overlays, Juniper Woods, the plan we just looked at, that's a conservation residential overlay, Sugarbrook, that will be, that we did the final plan approval in 2020, that's mixed residential, so we have, and the Brookwoods are mixed residential, so we've got some plans where this is particularly, can be seen today. We're looking at increasing the minimum lot width from 50 feet to 75 feet, now that's at the building lines, you could still potentially have, you know, some flag lots here and there, but it's an overall increase to what you typically see on the lot width along the right-of-way. We're talking about bumping the cartway width from 20 feet to 24 feet. The goal of the 20 feet was to, you know, bring the sidewalks and the homes closer, slow down traffic, but we've come to realize that there's just not enough space there, you know, especially during construction, and then you get people living these houses, delivery vehicles, it creates some problems, so we just need to widen it out a little bit. We're gonna be bumping the front setbacks back a little bit, to 25-foot minimum, 30-foot maximum, we think that'll help with some issues we've seen with garages being too close to the sidewalk, we have vehicles blocking sidewalks, so we think that that slight increase will, will help us out there. And then some other things that are, are kind of more higher-picture stuff, we have come to realize that we need to start establishing requirements for off-street guest parking areas, outside of just like parking spaces for the cluster mailbox, especially with these narrow right-of-ways, we just don't have space really for on-street parking, so we're gonna be crafting in some language, requiring one off-street parking space for every three residential units. I found some case examples out of Oregon that I think would work well for us.
Are they interspersed?
That's a good, that's a good question, and I think we should, we should try to get that as much as we can.
So we don't want each parking lot right in the middle of the town.
Right, and we'll have to craft that in somehow.
You have that parking along the cul-de-sac, right, where you just extend it 18 feet, now you have that circular part.
That always, that works nicely.
So I, I would encourage us to look at how we...
Yeah, it'll be interesting how we put language in to, to say that and to enforce that, but that's certainly a goal.
We definitely feel we need to get some guest parking in these CR MR neighborhoods.
Might just be a matter of, you know, four or more can't be adjacent one, or something like that, or...
Or every so often within so many feet apart.
Right. Um, we wanna look at maybe tweaking how we look at open space to focus on functional open space, I know that's always difficult, because you're giving up prime ground for, that could be residential lots, but I think sometimes we're having open space that is just completely worthless.
It's the ribbon around, it's the, what's left over, right? How do we define functional?
Can I, that's a great question.
We haven't figured that one out.
I figured that out, yes.
Slope on it, we'll get you there.
It's tough.
If you can't fit a tennis court on it, it doesn't count. Like, figure something out.
It should be pickleball court.
Pickleball, right. Yeah, yeah, that's a really good question.
Yeah, 'cause we, we did take out stormwater basins unless they were aquatic, all that stuff.
You can't, you can't count anything encumbered by easements.
Stormwater included.
Right.
We've got all that language in there, but we're, we're finding, and we've had some functional open space provided in Brookwood Place, they have a nice...
We have some in Westbury.
We'll have some functional open space in Westbury and functional open space in Hamlet Center.
I mean, what makes...
But some of these neighborhoods are just giving us...
The ribbons.
You normally get the top lot or the little parklet inside, you know, the back of the homes, one of those, or inside the, the U-shaped center, and then you get the ribbon that we can't grade to, which is in your buffer, right? So that's what you're gonna get.
Right, and then, so what makes space functional?
Correct.
You know, is it a lack of steep slopes, so maybe we look at changing how we approach the allotment for a certain percentage of your required open space to be encumbered by steep slopes to a degree, I mean, we gotta...
Can you, can you run a lawnmower on it without tipping over?
Yeah, it just goes to, you know, the hiking trail, right? That's always, the walking trail is always, oh, it's functional, we're walking there. Is that really functional?
I would argue, yeah, I mean, that would be, especially if it connects to something else.
I don't know if functional is the right word, but we're, you know, more usable open space, more beneficial open space?
Create a definition or criteria that defines functional, and it's like, does it meet this series of tasks? Could you build a pickleball court there? Could you put a playground there? Could you put parking spaces there? Could you put the number of things, and that will...
Yeah, I'm gonna have to do some, I'm gonna have to do some more research and see if I can't find some good.
It might be helpful to look, in, in, there's, in like the Virginia area, right outside of DC, there are neighborhoods out there that have, and you know those people wanna, wanna use, those developers want the maximum as well, as well, that have like giant areas where, I mean, you literally see them, all the kids out there.
Right.
You know, playing soccer, throwing a ball around, doing whatever it is, and that's more or less, like, you want a picnic area, you want a pavilion, or maybe you make it so that they have to put something on it.
Right.
Either a picnic area or a pavilion or something like that. I think also down by, you know, the Lake Colony, Timberlake, where you walk down that area, there's the gazebo, and it goes up to the pond, and what's that?
Communal open space, or something, instead of, if you're looking for a different definition besides functional, something, to Rochelle's point, like a different word.
Community use space.
Community, community.
Yeah, I mean, we can call it.
It's how you define it.
It's gonna be functional.
How you establish the requirements for it to be that.
But I'm thinking, you look at maybe the Virginia area, I think they've gotta have criteria there.
I'm gonna keep digging, I'm confident that we'll be able to find something.
We're in Western Pennsylvania, it's a whole different world.
Oh, no, no, I just mean as far as, but, but the language...